Considered on July fourteenth, twenty twenty three at six fifteen at City Hall. And I'm going to invite you to come in, come in on these two items. One is an ordinance to rezone the property located at six fifteen Rutland Drive, approximately five acres, map seventy eight parcel ten point zero seven from RS forty to CMU. The second is an ordinance to reason on the property at seven one eight Monticello Drive, approximately sixteen acres, map seventy six parcel forty one point zero one from RS forty to AR forty. If you would like to make a comment on either of these two items, I'd invite you forward to the podium to give your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized for three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We'll reconvene for a regular meeting at six thirty.
Today is July fourteenth. I'll call the meeting of the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners to order. And pursuant to city code six twenty two ten, we do have a quorum present. So our first item on our agenda is to set the agenda. I would, if there's no objections, request that we remove ten A. That's at the request of our planning department to remove from it. Any objections to the removal of ten A? We're hearing none. Any other changes to the agenda? Then with that objection, we'll set the agenda. We have a hundred and fifty six page packet, two items on unfinished, five items under new business. If you'd like to follow along, they're inside the wire baskets by the door. That'll be the guide to get through the meeting tonight. And with that, I'll invite our city manager, if you would do us the honor to lead us in our invocation and pledge there.
Yes, sir. Everybody will bow with me, please. Dear heavenly fathers, we gather for this meeting. We seek your wisdom and guidance, illuminate our minds so we may make decisions that align with your will. Help us to communicate effectively, respect different opinions, remain united in our purpose. Let your Holy Spirit lead our discussions and grant us clarity in every matter. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next item is approval of the minutes. We have one set from June twenty third. Is there any objection to adopting the minutes with the changes laid out on the table? Without objection, the minutes are adopted. Next thing we'll do is move into our citizen comments. We'll open the floor up for three minutes. If you'd like to address the board of commissioners with comments, I'd invite you to come forward and do so. Ask that you give your name and address for the record. And please understand the commission is under no obligations to answer questions from the floor, but we may, may direct someone to get with staff on that. Just ask that you avoid improper language, profanity, or any other improper conduct. And with that, we'll open the floor. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Stephanie Beamer, five thirteen Montrose Drive. First and foremost, actually, I want to thank Jennifer Hamlin, Shane Shemannar, and Tim Borkum, and others at the city for, and city planning and engineering departments for quickly addressing our concerns about the construction at the new Elliot's Vale Reserve Development. I want to thanks Commissioner Giles also for talking to a lot of the neighbors, many of which are here. We appreciate your service, all of you, for their city. For almost a year now, we've been coming to the city with our concerns about the development and others. We just need responsible development policies in place and personnel to manage these developments. The board and the planning commission have approved several developments across the city, and a lot of them aren't really being monitored that well. I think it's a lot because of lack of staff. Contractors have the ask for forgiveness later mentality right now, as they know it's going to be just fine. We've seen clearing of trees without delivering upon, upon the agreed upon plans that the board approves. We've seen examples of this at Hickory Hills, South Green Hill Road, Curd Road, Nichols Vale itself, Kelsey Glen, and now Elliot's Reserve. There's a bait and switch with a lot of these developments, promising luxury homes to turn into lower priced rental properties. Developments are flooding out existing homes, neighborhoods, and roads. Contractors and plans are being changed after the board approves these, and there's no follow up. We just, with just the approval of the site grading plan, the developers took out a lot of our trees and bushes. We were told that they were going to survey the property, which we just saw grade A out there surveying. So I asked if they had a licensed surveyor on. I don't know if they do, but they're out there with measuring tape, marking things off. We were told that we were going to get free pre-blast surveys. And when we asked for a copy of them, we were told, some neighbors were told a hundred and fifty dollars, some people were told a hundred dollars if we wanted a copy of our pre-blast survey that was free. Some neighbors are now paying for our own pre-blast surveys. We're paying for property surveys and other protective measures that are costing us over a thousand dollars per home because of the development that was approved. You're costing our current taxpayers and constituents because of these development decisions. We understand with the budget issues that you guys have been addressing the last few meetings, especially when it comes to infrastructure and services like our fire, which we appreciate, and our emergency services, our schools and our roads. We got to take and step back with this, this planning and really look at growth and infrastructure that's going on because it's only going to make it worse. There are not enough people in the city to monitor the developers. You tell them to stop, stop construction, which happened today, and you leave the site, and all of a sudden, there's chainsaws and everything else going. We just need better policies in place and putting these, and holding these developments accountable for not following the rules that you're set in place. We've heard time and time again that last, this last year, that we don't have a policy for that. We told about the half blast and oops, sorry, they can full blast.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I have more, but I'll hand it off to one of my neighbors to finish.
Kinder Nits, four thirty seven Whitley Way, also seven twenty two Tenny Park Lane.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Mount Juliet since twenty nineteen. I'm also a local realtor. I've sold, sold over fifteen million in real estate right here in Wilson County, and I personally stand to benefit from the new homes being built in this area. The Elliot's Reserve Development is not the right fit for this community. As has been stated before, many of us have no issue with the commercial portion of this development that being built at the bottom of the hill. The real concern lies with the so-called luxury townhomes that have been approved directly behind the homes on Montrose Drive, Whitley Way, and Nicholsville Lane. The developer claimed they could not afford the commercial portion of Elliot's Reserve without building the townhomes. Yet, the land originally listed at three point five million was sold to the developer for one point nine five million. That's nearly half the asking price. So the financial argument does not hold up. My home backs up to the corner of Elliot's Reserve. Most of my backyard lacks a mature tree line because it was removed during the development of Nicholsville. At that time, we were given a mulch buffer bed in its place, but a twenty foot conservation easement on the side of Montrose and Nicholsville was put into place behind the homes to protect the original landowners of the Ellis Reserve property now, privacy and limit development disruptions. Eventually, the city gave us back our twenty foot buffer to our homeowners, but the current developers at Ellis Reserve don't seem to know or care where our property lines begin or end. It doesn't feel like the same level of care or consideration is being given to our current Nicholsville residents. With a ten foot no touch, no touch buffer was promised as part of Ellis Reserve plans, once grading began, they began, began removing trees, shrubs, and privacy that we fought so hard to keep. Just last Thursday, after construction crews began grading within five feet of our property on Whitley Way, Shane came out and required them to get a survey. But within hours, the people showed up, and they were from grade A construction, not a natural, or a neutral third party surveyor, and they were measuring property lines based on neighbors fences were. Many of these fences were never on the actual property line because we had a twenty foot buffer, and homeowners have not been able to move their properties and their fences yet. So they're measuring, hell, fix it. Grade A even told me that they are planning on taking down my tree lined area, the only privacy that I have left. I have personally shown them where my property line is and reminded them they cannot touch ten feet behind my property zone. This is unacceptable. Without a professional survey, they are acting on assumptions and doing whatever they please to keep the project moving forward. This project was rushed, and we urge you to pause and reconsider what's happening here. The people of Mount Juliet, especially those of us in Nicholsville, deserve protection, respect, and thoughtful planning that preserves the homes and communities that we work so hard for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
They wouldn't have a erosion control at Elliot's Reserve if I didn't call the incentive video. They were site clearing with no erosion control for almost a week until I said something. The White House mayor had to halt all construction back in February until the situation with the developments there was fixed. They are not being planned, designed, and construction as responsible manner. This is what's happening at our neighborhood. Yes, I'm still against the development. If you want to drain from their property across my proper property to get the public utility assessment, you have to follow the campaign contributions that went to some sitting here from the developers, designers, and property owners of Elliot's Reserve. We listened to some of you assure the property owners that you'll get this development pushed through for, for them, even with two hundred and sixty signatures of a neighbor's surrounding property, saying, no, this property never would have passed after the election, as if it's passed a three two vote. One of the vote goes, one of those votes is now gone. We beg you to stop this overdevelopment, fix the issues with the management, in managing needs and monitoring them, help the people working hard that can't be three places that wants the police, the contractors. And finally, start thinking about the people you represent that voted you in and put the trust in, in you instead of friends and developers, some of which don't live in Mount Juliet city limits, that are profiting off this irresponsible construction. I do sincerely thank you for your hard work for the year we've been trying to voice our concerns and help the city, not where we are now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Mark Heinzey. I live at one zero zero six Benton Harbor Boulevard in Mount Juliet.
Thank you, sir.
Kenny, welcome back. We missed you. I'd like to share just a few thoughts with you regarding the proposed ordinance tonight, eleven B, concerning the relocation of the Mount Juliet Senior Activity Center from its current location tucked behind the Church of Christ, to what will hopefully become a new home existing in the current Mount Juliet Police Department building. It's taken a lot of hard work from a lot of people to get us to this point, and I'd like to acknowledge and thank some of those individuals, including city attorney Samantha Burnett, city manager Kenny Martin, Mayor Manus, and the entire board of commission, Greg Wood with B and W Construction, Kathy Jason, and everyone at Katz, Binkley, Jones, and Morris for all of their hard work so far. I'd also like to thank Melissa and Jennifer, the staff, volunteers, and the board of directors at the Mount Juliet Community or Mount Juliet Senior Activity Center, specifically Kathy Wood, Jeff Rowlett, and Rob Porter for their countless hours in getting us to where we are tonight, and to all of those who have helped us so much that I did not mention. A big thank you to everyone. Over thirty years ago, I started serving on the board of directors for the Chamber of Commerce. Nearly twelve, twenty seven years ago, I took on the role of president and CEO. In those thirty plus years, I've worked with dozens and dozens of nonprofits. Few, if any, have ever done more with less than the Mount Juliet Senior Activity Center. The work they do, the lives they impact, the people they help, and the crucial services they provide really are nothing less than extraordinary. Mayor Manus, commissioners, as you begin consideration of eleven, ordinance eleven B tonight, I'd ask that you please support these relocation efforts and help the dreams of literally hundreds in our senior community become a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
On a personal note, I serve on the Mount Juliet Activity Senior Center Board because of a promise I made to my ninety three year old mother. She spent years volunteering at the center, started the book club, helped fundraise, and never stopped promoting it. Even now, from her assisted living home, she's on social media cheering for the center and every business that supports it. She's been rooting for this project from the very beginning, and I hope she lives long enough to attend the grand opening because she's already picking out her outfit. Your commitment means the world to a lot of people in this community, some you may not even be aware of. The community is active, vibrant, influential, and ready to support this valuable resource in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Rob Porter. Mr. Martin, welcome back, sir.
Get your dress, please.
I am Rob Porter. I live at seven twenty eight General Kershaw Drive.
Thank you, sir.
I am currently serving as the board chair for the Mount Juliet Senior Center. I actually am one of the younger seniors. I want to tell you that just, actually, I, actually, I just turned, my birthday was last week. I turned sixty eight years old. I spent twenty years when I was in my forties, thirties and forties coaching to Mount Juliet Little League, and I hope I get twenty years working with the senior center. So that'll see how we go there. So we appreciate all the hard work. Samantha, thank you so much for working with Jeff Rowlett and working out the things we do. And I think these folks with these kind of cheerleaders, you know that there's a lot of hard work and people that'll be positively affected by this facility. So we appreciate it, and if you have any questions when it comes up on the agenda, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Hi, good evening. This is Balakrishna Uppala. I stay at five twenty five Montrose.
I stay at 525 Montrose. I just want to echo the concerns raised by my neighbors, Stephanie and Kendra. Just want to echo that and support the concerns and would request your kind attention to this topic, please. That's it. I just don't want to waste your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Melissa Sandin, 1013 Brookstone Boulevard. I just want to, just the board members here, their support, all y'all's support, everybody's support's been so awesome this past year. We're looking forward to moving forward with this. Our members are excited, we're excited, all the staff's excited. And we just hope to be in that new building next year. And like Galen said, we'll be doubling our capacity and having a lot more people that we can serve. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Steven Heckendorf, 393 Page Drive.
Thank you, sir.
So, I know it's been all budget. And obviously I had prior commitments. I couldn't be here the last month. But with the raise of 270% on city property tax, I just, I just had to say a couple of things. One, I guess I'm just disappointed because I'm here quite a bit. And to all of a sudden, I feel like to be surprised by such an increase. Now, I get it. You know, it can be explained away that it's small dollars, you know? Oh, it's, you're only paying $90 right now. Multiply it, it's not a ton of money. It's just like a Netflix subscription. Well, people are going to have to delete different subscriptions technically just to break even. And I guess I'm just disappointed a little bit because I feel like if we're on this path to where we needed such a big increase, there should have been some kind of heads up. I don't know if we can look at quarterly updates on where we are with our budget. It would be great because I mean, it's just frustrating that all of a sudden, out of nowhere, some people are messaging me, dude, did you go to the meeting? Did you see they're proposing a 400% increase? I was like, whoa. I was like, I missed, I missed a meeting. Oh, now it's for, like, I don't know how, like, again, there's a lot of, and I know Commissioner Malley, you know, you push like having people involved at meetings. And it's hard because even the folks who come to the meetings who are involved, it's, it's a, it's a shot in the dark. It's like, oh, we're here, we're at a massive increase. Again, I get it. It's not the dollars, it's more about the principle. A government will always, always grow to meet the money you give it, always. There's, if you, you know, we're already hearing about how next year might be worse. And I mean, I know that, I know that you mentioned about it possibly could be worse. And I just don't see how there, I didn't hear anything. I did watch the meetings. I didn't hear about this going back down. I heard about how it was the lowest in the state, we're one of the lowest, you know, bought, you know, really, really low and how we get all these services, but I didn't hear, oh, but you know, this is temporary to meet the, meet the whole. You know, we hope to have better revenues. We hope to have better systems in place. I just, I just know that the more you feed the dragon, the more you feed government, the more you expand government, the more positions you add, everything, everything won't go back. I mean, we get quarterly, we actually get monthly updates where I work about our fiscal survivability. And working in healthcare, it's called days cash on hand. And you've got to have cash on hand and you have to plan it. So, again, I would appreciate maybe, you know, hopefully we get better updates, especially this year fiscally. And I get it, I could go to y'all and you all have been great, you know, when I've come to you to ask for questions. But I would appreciate, I think it's publicly, I think it's important. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Connie Saylor, 435 Whitley Way at Nicholsville. My husband and I recently moved here Memorial Day weekend. We came from Florida. We were trying, we sold three homes in Florida because of builders who do not follow rules. Where your property gets damaged, we keep incurring expenses of cleaning up the debris or whatever else the builders do. So, we moved to Tennessee knowing that Mount Juliet was very strong, especially the police department. They ran it like Polk County in Florida. They do not tolerate. I hope that the board does not tolerate these builders to run this area like Florida. You will end up making me sell my home because we just got here. I don't want to leave. I like it here. But when I see builders within inches of my fence, starting at 6:45 a.m. And we just retired and we were looking for a nice, quiet area. And I'm not happy. I'm in tears every day knowing I had to pay out of my own pocket to get a blasting inspector to make sure my home was going to be safe. We saved every dollar and sold our place in New York State and we are trying to leave Florida and we thought we would stay. I'm not sure we will because as long as this, these builders do not comply with these rules that are set and there's no one here to enforce it in this town, I don't feel like it's a good area for people to come to. And I really hope that you will do this to protect the citizens of Mount Juliet because these guys are out of control. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Pete Saylor, 435 Whitley Way. So, we're related. We are new to the area, so we're trying to get a lay of the land. I did go to the planners and find out a little bit more about Elliott Reserve because actually we weren't really aware of it when we bought. The planner allowed me to look at some of the plans because I feel like knowledge is key. We need to see exactly what is written in there and what they, what they will do. And I was told, again, we have a place in Florida. We're not residents of Tennessee, but we do live here and pay taxes here, that we can't get any email information. So, I'd like to ask if information is the key. I should be able to go in the planners and have them take any plans or any materials that are germane to the development Elliott Reserve and be able to email to me. I was just, he just told me, he says, well, find a neighbor that's actually a Tennessee resident. So, you know, even though we're not Tennessee residents yet, you know, we feel we should be able to get that information because it's all about information. And like what my wife said, you know, suddenly they're cutting five yards from our lot and we see them rip up the fence there and then go back another 10 feet. That makes you wonder kind of who's in charge here. Another example, we had just moved in the neighborhood. We had the guy from VCE come out, I think his name was Austin. And he's talking about, well, you need to get a pre-blast inspection. And it's like, okay, you know, I really didn't know where you can be blasting and like that. Well, I really can't discuss that. We're just hired directly, you know, from the builder. And, you know, I kind of said, well, let me think about this. And I actually called him back to come in and inspect, and that was on June 21st. And I said, oh, by the way, you know, the notification, when are they going to start blasting? And he said Monday, the 23rd. So, you know, I don't know who's talking to who, but it doesn't give you a warm fuzzy about the whole project when you think about it. It's just like, okay, was, was he not telling me the truth? Did the developer say that to him to get everybody to go ahead and sign up for his inspection? Because I know they were going around knocking on doors and it's like, well, you better get it done before they start blasting or else, you know, what liabilities do the developer have? So, I was a little bit unclear of that, but it just kind of gives you an overall arching picture of like, what is going on right behind my door and what's going to happen? What kind of buffer they're going to do and what letters of the law? Because we want to make sure if nothing else, they're going to follow the letters of the law and hopefully actually go above and beyond that and have to talk to us and be good neighbors and see what we can, see what we can work out. So, that's my biggest concern. And that was kind of a little discerning when we got in the neighborhood. That was like, that's our first exposure. So, left a little bad taste in our mouth.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rachel Lagrana, 509 Montrose Drive, Nicholsville. I don't have a speech, but I want to speak from the bottom of my heart. I'm a single mom. I moved three years ago to Nicholsville to provide my daughter good education because I trust the Wilson County school system, which is really great. I'm making a really big effort to keep my house and all this is concerning. I'm one of the ones that was asked $150 for a free pre-blast, pre-blast survey. And then I had to spend $500 to pay for a private survey because we don't trust them. I don't trust them for the survey. So, I made this extra effort. I'm on Montrose Drive. The drainage is going to go through my house. What's going to happen with the house that I made, I'm making a big effort to pay month by month. I don't want to move from Nicholsville, but laws have to be respected. And there's a commitment. There are promises from them that they are breaking day by day. What's going to happen? That I don't know, but we just need everything to be respected and everything to be safe and responsible like Kendra and Stephanie have very, very thoroughly explained. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll close citizen comments, move to Commissioner comments and reports. Recognize Commissioner Giles for five minutes.
Thank you to all that came out to voice your, your concerns about this. It's a concern of mine and, and I was on the phone with several many times on Friday and we had a meeting come up. Thank you, staff, for taking it and going out there and, and taking some action on this, which truly needed it. I am concerned about any kind of bushes or trees or whatever that someone will plant back because, you know, it's one thing to take away, but whose responsibility is it to come out and make sure that those trees and those bushes live? It's not the homeowner. It's you who destroyed them. So, you need to get a plan together to make sure that these bushes and trees live that you're putting back that you shouldn't have taken out in the first place. Also for, we had a good 4th of July here. We had two, two different fireworks shows that I'm aware of. One, the city put on and one that the Needums put on. And because of where my office is located, I was able to watch the Needums and it was spectacular and I appreciate them contributing to the community as well. Kenny, it's good to have you back. Glad you're feeling better. So, Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll recognize Vice Mayor Trevent.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, folks that are online as well as in the room tonight that came out to speak. You know, I think my community Hickory Hills was even brought up tonight. And, and I could tell you this right now, these contractors, there is a sense of accountability that they're lacking and is frustrating. I'm actually, I was dealing with the rain, some runoff tonight. I actually got some phone calls, some pictures, some videos just because of the amount of rain. And I keep hearing, well, it's, it's these torrential downpours, you know? No, this is Tennessee weather. Figure it out, people, you know? So, yes, I'm just as frustrated as you are and I appreciate your, everyone coming out because these developers, whether if they are from our city or if they're local or if they're coming in from out of state, you know, there is a sense of accountability that they, you know, have to be following. And, and, and I know our team is actually working on it along with our city manager and also this commission. So, every little bit helps and we appreciate the continued awareness that you're bringing to, to each project because I'm not out there every day either. So, but I do appreciate it. Thanks for all the folks, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, since the last meeting, you know, like we've had the hometown hero, Barry Wilmore. We've had the 4th of July event. We've had from all of the volunteers, sponsors, the parks, you know, employees, the committees, the families and even the first responders. I'll tell you, this city has had some really good things over the last couple of weeks to bring in everybody together. I hope everyone had a great time. And, and as we wrap up the summer, it's crazy to hear that the schools getting ready to start up here in about two and a half more weeks. So, I know, I hate to say that for all those families that got to get ready, but, you know, be on the lookout for those yellow buses. I just want to keep bringing out awareness because we've all been very fortunate where we get up, we go to work, we don't have to worry about those kids. But I like to kind of go ahead and start talking about it just because of the fact that we all tend to get complacent with those buses. So, please share that with your kids, any new drivers, you know, especially the teenagers that are going to be first year heading off to school. So, please talk to them about the awareness. The last thing is, is I, I didn't get a chance to talk to our Public Works team, but, but I did a little bit. But I know since this rain, we may be a little bit delayed. I don't know if we're going to be on track for tonight, but I know it may be talked about, but just appreciate the citizens as well as our first responders and our departments here keeping track and all the awareness of what's going on with the train tracks as some of the folks were getting here tonight. I know traffic was a little bit of a pain to get here, but it was well worth it, especially when the end result's going to be a little bit smoother. I think coming up to this, this event here, we had, I could tell you at least two 5-gallon buckets of paint that was accidentally spilled out, one crossing the train tracks and one making a turn. So, those tracks definitely needed to be repaired and, and I appreciate the city stepping up to, to help support that. Welcome back, our city manager. I'm glad that you're back in office. Appreciate you. I know you've got a long list of action items, so I'm not going to bombard you this week, but I will definitely see you next week. And with that, to all the other residents, please reach out to me, whether if you're in my district or not. I appreciate the communication, the emails. I know some of you are very passionate and, and I can read an email like you're pretty upset, but, but I'll do my best to read it as everybody's bringing awareness to me and that you're not yelling at me. But either way, that's okay too. So, thank you. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll recognize Commissioner Malley for five minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Kenny back. It's good to see you. Really appreciate all the residents from Nicholsville coming about, coming out. Anytime people come out and speak, I just admire you so much because that's what I did before I ever got interested in the city. And it's not easy to do. It's hard. It's frightening to come up to that microphone, but I really appreciate it when, when you come out. As you know, recently on our budget, our sales tax is still up, but it has slowed. So, important to shop local. I can't tell you the comments I see on social media where people shop elsewhere because they don't like the traffic. Well, what, what you're doing is you're taking resources away from our police, fire, ambulance, roads and lots of other things. So, I can't tell you how important it is to please shop local. Speaking of the budget, as you know, I was the only person to vote against the budget. So, I don't, it wasn't on record, so tonight it's going to be on the record. Can y'all put that chart up? I have a chart I want to show you. Has to do with the property taxes. So, there's eight reasons that I voted against this budget. And I did, I got this pie chart from Financial Director and I added the text there. So, and again, the initial reason the property tax was started was for the fire department in 2013. So, here are the reasons I voted against this budget so that it can be on record. One, I do not feel that this is a sustainable budget. Two, this budget that passed used 68.6% of fund balance reserves of $26.6 million to balance the budget, only leaving 7.1 million in unrestricted funds for emergencies and lead us into next year's budget. 1.3 million of the fund balance is restricted to parks, capital projects that comes from hotel motel tax. Number three, there is no plan for the future to fund next year's budget for reoccurring expenses of $49 million and $22 million of capital payments and will leave us in a vulnerable, vulnerable position. The only answer when pressed at second reading was, well, we will face that when the time comes. Number four, while every year we pass a budget for one fiscal year, we need to think further into the future to keep the city financially stable. This budget addresses now, but will lead to more difficult decisions down the road. We need to be more proactive. Number five, the Financial Director submitted a recommended plan at first reading based on 54 cents property tax, which would have put us in a good position for next year. At first reading, that 54 cents was dropped to 44 cents. And then at second reading, it was dropped to 30 cents and then 29 cents based on past reductions in property tax rates. to 30 cents and then 29 cents based on past reductions in property tax rates, which initially was 20 cents, cut to 16, cut to 11. Um, it just shows that dropping the rate has only resulted in loss of revenues. Number six, since the start of the Mount Juliet Fire Department in 2013, the city started the property tax to fund, to fund the fire department. Their budget for this budget cycle is 12.2 million. That's only for personnel and operating. That does not include cap, capital. Even though they've been moved into the general fund, I feel the property taxes should fund the majority of their budget or at least help supplement it for the most part. Number seven, public safety is half of our budget now, which includes police, fire and ambulance. And I feel we need to get a handle on it because it increases every year. We depend on our public sa- safety departments and they have to be funded every year, especially as we, uh, grow as a city. The, and number eight, I believe the property tax rate should come from the financial director, not this board. And you can see the annual percentages that come in from property tax at 11 cents. The numbers are in white around the pie chart. And the most it ever reached was 2.3 at the most. Uh, this 29 cents raise, rate increase is only gonna bring in $6 million. And as you can see, their, uh, budget is 12.2. Even though they're in the general fund, they are still listed under fire department in the budget. So that's technically, you can say it's in the general fund, but technically that's where it goes. So I just wanted that to be on record and I hope that makes sense. And I just wanted to explain my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, my name is James Manus. I'm the mayor of the city of Mount Juliet and I'm proud to be the mayor of a city that allocates 50% of its spending to emergency services and public safety. I'm proud to be here in one of the safest cities in the state of Tennessee and I'm very appreciative of everything that the staff does to make that the case in this city. Uh, we've heard a lot about the budget on this thing and I wanna say there's a lot budgeted on there. And, uh, if you believe we're gonna complete every road project that we would like to project, that we've got accounted for in that budget, um, I'm gonna bring you back to reality. Uh, we can allocate a lot of funds for, for projects and capital projects, but there is no way humanly possible, as much as we would like to, that we would be able to complete all those projects in this budget year. And many of those things are gonna roll over to the next budget. Um, I understand there's concern about the property tax rate not being high enough, but folks, I'm a firm believer, uh, that government will always come back and ask for more if they need to pick the pockets of the taxpayers again. But it's been stated that the property tax was passed to fund the fire department. Um, folks, I, I sat in this chair right here that Vice Mayor Trevette put in when the property tax was passed. That property tax was not passed to fund the fire department. In fact, the fire department wasn't even on the conversation until a year later. Uh, the property tax was passed in 2011 for enhanced services. The city, uh, spent a great deal of effort trying to convince, beg, um, the county to up the staffing in this as a response, as a response to that past budget when it was passed in 2011. Uh, Commissioner Rich at the time with Commissioner Hall co-sponsored a resolution from the county stating that they would not do anything to improve the fire protection in the city of Mount Juliet, even though the population had doubled or tripled ever since it was passed back in the agreement, I believe back going back to 1986. And that if, if the city wanted to do anything and if they took action to improve it anyway, um, that they would be leaving town and that they were gonna continue to provide the service that they were providing. So after further construction and, and, uh, debate for almost a year, um, I brought an ordinance to establish the fire department after every act, after everything that could be done, I thought on our behalf was done. The fire department was established in 2012. It went operational in 13. And as has been pointed out, it was funded by property tax. Uh, 2021, uh, one of the first things I did was try to move the fire department into general fund. To me, uh, if you're gonna be debating anything on what you're spending your money on, uh, public safety shouldn't be held hostage to a property tax rate. That's just my, um, feelings on the subject. Changing subjects, I'll say we've had a lot of wonderful events at this city. Um, we've had some, Parks Department has put on some, done a couple of events at least out there and done a wonderful job doing it. And I know they had a lot of departments that supported that. Uh, the road work, I know it's been a hot weekend for the guys out there working on it. I appreciate the public works for their efforts on that, getting the railroad crossing improved. Also the work that, uh, see the police department standing out there on some very hot days out helping keep that traffic flowing. We also have a couple of scouts here tonight with us, I think, pursuing their citizenship badge and community communications badge. Either of you have a speech prepared? I'm getting no takers on the speech. So, but I will appreciate you being here tonight and thank you for everything that you do. And with that, we'll recognize our city manager for his comments.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's awesome to see a bunch of familiar faces. Thanks for the prayers and well wishes. I've been under the weather, uh, for the last few weeks unexpectedly. So I really appreciate that. It says a lot about our community. Uh, thanks also for the commission for stepping up and funding the railroad crossing. A lot of folks don't realize, but the railroad crossing here on Mount Juliet Road is owned by the National Eastern Railroad and operated by RJ Corman. Uh, they've been very great to work with. Uh, but in order to get that repaired, the city had to step up and pay for those repairs. And we've made the decision as a elected body and staff, it needed to be done. Y'all deserve better. Uh, it felt like Tater Peeler Road in Lebanon, if you're familiar with that, Tater Peeler Road was named because they used to tote, uh, potatoes from understanding these old wagons, these wooden wagons. And the road was so bumpy that it would peel the, the potatoes while they're in the wagon. So I always thought that was funny. I, I lived nearby there one time, so I thought that was a neat story. So thank you for your patience. Uh, the, the residents have been absolutely phenomenal. The patience has been phenomenal. The, the things that we're reading, we hate it for the businesses that are on Mount Juliet Road. And I know you'll make it up to them with shopping locally, especially the ones that were, um, affected, uh, the most. I'm also excited about the senior citizens and the senior citizens board for being here. In my 35 plus years with the city, I've served on the board at one time. I've watched the wonderful things they do. I am a senior citizen myself and I'm proud of that. And I know, uh, there's other people in here that are proud of that. And I wanna thank this commission, uh, for stepping up. We've been trying to accomplish this for a long time. So I'm very, very excited about it. Um, as Mark Hindsley used to say and probably still does, uh, a good sign of how our community takes care of its people, that takes care of its young people and its seniors. And our community, I think, does a really, really good job of that overall, but in particular those two categories. So much so that our, our local hometown heroes family reached out to me today to thank not only the elected body, all of our staff and our citizens for showing up and, uh, recognizing, uh, our, our hometown hero and astronaut, uh, Barry Butch Wilmore. Uh, this community really turned out big time. The parks did a phenomenal job. And that says, uh, a lot about our community. I was very proud of that. Our local patriotism and, uh, and, and most important is Commissioner Malley said, when you talk about budget things, thankfully, we've got the shopping destinations and the local businesses and we continue to try to recruit those businesses. As a matter of fact, the commission doesn't know about this, but just today I was on the phone with a big box retailer that wants to come to our community. And we're hoping we can convince them and coast them across the line because every dollar you spend in this community, be it a tank of gas or a biscuit at a local restaurant, is what operates your city. It's not my city. It's not their city. It's our city. It's everybody's city in here. And for the folks that turned out tonight, especially from these subdivisions, we feel like we've got great relationships with our developers, but a lot of what you said tonight is exactly right. They know better. Our staff is phenomenal. They can't be everywhere all the time, just like police can't be everywhere all the time. But some of our developers have dropped the ball. And so instead of two layers, basically there'll be three layers. And if we have to get out in the field a little bit more to make sure they're doing it, but you would think common sense would prevail. If you put a stake up or if there's a boundary, you just don't go past it. I had a heart surgery many years ago and I'm, I have two bundle branches and everybody in this room has one unless one of yours has done away with like mine. I'm just glad they fixed the right one. Because if it hadn't have, that'd have been a major mistake. You had to almost look at it that way. You can't make those mistakes of going out and looking at something and going, oh, we're not, we're, we're not gonna be as forgiving in the future. So the staff that's had to go out there to our elected body for supporting and backing your residents, thank you. Y'all deserve better and we'll make sure that you get better. But, uh, people aren't as good as their word and the requirements we set for. So if we have to raise the bar, the staff has done that. Thank each and every one of you for all that you do because, again, as I always say, Mount Juliet's just a place on a map without its people, the people in this room and the people out there that call it home, or what actually makes it a community and a place to call home. So thank you. And these young folks are our future and I'm glad to have them. And that concludes my report. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the railroad crossing, I believe it is slated to open at 5:00 AM in the morning. So hopefully get that done. Uh, our, our initial goal was to have it open by Monday, but, uh, it'd be Monday somewhere still. But, uh, I think the holdup is, is the internal temperature of the asphalt has to drop before one, below 120 degrees before we can have traffic over it. And we'd rather take a little extra time, get it down to 120, make sure this repair sticks, then open it back up. So if you're out driving at 4:00 AM, uh, patience, please. With that, we'll move into the, our business portion of our agenda, which is the, we have the unfinished consent agenda, two items under that. 9A and 9B, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 615 Rutland Drive, approximately five acres, map 78 parcel 10.07 from RS 40 to CMU. And 9B, which is an ordinance to rezone the property located at 718 Monticello Drive, approximately 16 acres, map 76 parcel 41.01 from RS 40 to AR 40. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Hey, any opposed? It does carry. City manager?
Yes, sir. There is a local business owner in the room that has an agenda item tonight. They own Breeden's Orchard. So if you wanna shop local, shop at Breeden's Orchard.
There you go. Shop local, folks. 10A was deferred at the setting of the agenda. We'll move to new business, which is under 11A, an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of the existing right of way of Second Avenue South and acceptance of a portion of the Mount Juliet Church, Church of Christ property, both located at 1940 North Mount Juliet Road map 55 parcel 95. A motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Giles?
So, um, I talked to the attorney today, talked to public works. And so where are we on what it says on the actual plat? What are, what are we, what kind of, uh, right of way is this?
So, yes, sir. Matthew White, Public Works Director. Um, so they had a, a plat approved by the planning commission correctly, correct? Um, it establishes a, a proposed greenway easement is what it's called on the plat. This plat hasn't been recorded yet, so I think it still can be changed or worded however we, however we want. I do personally prefer it to be in public right of way because that means we own and maintain that trail. The maintenance, I, I'm sure the church doesn't wanna maintain that trail. Uh, also it, it takes away some of the liability on the church. If, if it's in an easement, they still own the property that the greenway sits. If it's public right of way, we own it. It's our land. So, uh, I recommend that the greenway easement be changed to a public right of way. That's my opinion. I don't know if Sam has any other thoughts on that.
Yes, ma'am.
It can really be done either way. So whatever the board decides.
If a preference, Commissioner?
Well, I think it should be public right of ways too, because here's the thing about, I didn't think, and I was gonna go down to, to the church today, but because of all the construction and then I didn't know I was gonna have to go to the dentist, I didn't get to do that. So I wanted to make sure that they understood because I sure didn't want us to approve. And then all of a sudden, five years down the road, if we hypothetically, if we got it installed next week and you know what we wouldn't, but, but five years down the road, they come back and say, and the city says, oh, by the way, you've got to repair this greenway. Well, I don't think they, I don't think they thought that's the way it was gonna be. And I don't want us to do that. That's not, that's not being good. I wanted to make sure they understood. So I, I totally agree with, with you. I appreciate the Church of Christ, um, allowing this to happen and, and they're giving us the bridge, the part of the bridge and we're giving them to part of Second Avenue. But I just wanna make sure, because if you say no, you know, we wanna maintain it, well, you know, that would actually save the city a lot of money, but I just, uh, you know, I wanna make sure y'all are happy with this.
Sorry. Sir, your name and address, please?
Yeah. Jay Kef, uh, I live at 320 Karen Drive, uh, I'm sorry, Hunter's Run Lane. Um, however, I'm one of the elders for Mount Juliet Church of Christ, 1940. Uh, yes, Commissioner Giles, we are aware of, of the proposal to make it a right of way and not easement.
Okay.
And are accepting of that.
Okay. All right. All right. Yes, sir. So do we need a, a motion to do that? Cause it changes it from, from the other easement, correct? Was it?
The city accepts as dedication from the Mount Juliet Church of Christ, 128 square feet of property. And it doesn't say beyond that.
Yeah, that's just the bridge part. And then what happened, what, what, what I caught on that, that's what, what brought this up was that on the plat that was in our, uh, packet, it just said proposed and it didn't say what was on it. And so number one, I assume when the, the church, um, takes, takes this plat and records that you wanna record it all, everything at one time. So they would want to do the area for the greenway and then obviously this little bridge and then where we're giving them the, the, uh, the, the square footage on Second Avenue. So.
Okay. Um, right now it's done with two different documents. If we're just gonna do the right of way dedication, then I would suggest that needs to be added to the plat. I mean, it's a tiny little corner where that bridge is, but I don't think the, where the hashing is, goes all the way through the bridge. So we can just incorporate it all into one and just get it all on the plat and not have to do this separate map.
Okay. And then we do that?
It would just be all.
For the second reading?
Yes. It would all just be done via plat rather than a separate, um, deed.
Okay. But it'll be spelled out on that one, that it was a public right of way on the greenway and then it, and then?
Public right of way for greenway.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So is this just administrative action between first and second reading? Or do we need to amend anything in the ordinance on first reading?
Um, we would need to amend it being a public access easement to public right of way. Right now it's listed as a public access easement. So the commissioner wants to change it to right of way.
Isn't that right?
That's what.
Public right of way, correct?
The ordinance just talks about the bridge, not the, not the entirety of the greenway. So I don't know. That needs to be made clear.
But the reason I brought it up was because it didn't say it on there.
Yeah.
And, and all of a sudden I'm thinking, wait a minute, we, we've already talked about this. And then when I found out that it was the other, I thought, no, the Church of Christ, we, they don't wanna have to, most probably, he, he, you know, right, right.
So, yeah, but the ordinance just says we accept it here and it's referencing exhibit two. So that's where the change needs to happen on exhibit two?
Or maybe put one in, um, add one for the next meeting.
I'd probably just recommend making a motion for, um, the proposed walking trail to be changed from a public access easement to public right of way.
Okay. That's my motion. Did you write that down?
And then we can go in and change it for you in the ordinance.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second the motion. Hope it was written down. So I, I think here we have under now therefore be it ordained, adding a section three that changes it from a public access easement to right of way. Anything that we're accepting for the trail?
Public right of way.
Public right of way. Yeah.
Any questions or comments on the ordinance?
I would just like to thank the Church of Christ again for doing this for the city as I have many times. We appreciate you in the city. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I misspoke. Any questions or comments on the amendment? All, all in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Back on the ordinance as once amended. Any other questions, comments? All, all in favor of the ordinance as once amended, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Does carry. We unanimous vote. The next item is 11B, an ordinance to approve the lease agreement with the Mount Juliet West Wilson County Senior Citizen Service Center for the Mount Juliet Senior Activity Center. A motion and a second. Questions or comments? I will say there's one thing, it's been brought to my attention is the potential that the police may have to stay in the
may have to stay in the building a little longer than anticipated. This is just simply due to we can't get a guaranteed lockdown date on one of the communication lines. And I'm seeing a, I'm seeing a positive and a thumbs up out there from representatives.
Right. All in favor of the ordinance, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Does carry. 11C, which is a resolution approving the agreement between the city of Mount Juliet, Tennessee and the James N. Bush Construction Incorporated for the extension and relocation of sewer facilities on Old Lemon Dirt Road and Golden Barr Gate Ray and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement? Have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That does carry. 11D, which is a resolution approving a contract with the West Wilson Utility District for the relocation of water lines located on East Division Street and North Mount Juliet Road? Motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? 11D does carry with a vote of four to oh. And 11-5 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract between the city of Mount Juliet and Meovision Technologies US LLC for traffic signal preemptive for the fire department. Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on 11D? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Does carry. And without objection, we've reached item number 12, which is adjournment. Hearing no objections, we're adjourned.